We're hoping. It's on the court. It is a good location if you can get that building up. Couple hundred thousand dollars down the road.
You want to throw in there?
Throw at it. It just.
Hey, Kel. Not when it comes to matters, right?
Yep.
We're on the air.
I wouldn't. Well, it's. Because if it was to work. Cameras look like they're.
Ted's not going to be here.
No, Ted's not going to be here.
Oh, so I better.
It's not a big family. I told him be with his men. I'm going to go ahead and start. I can never tell. It's always in between. Good evening, Washington courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. On June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will offer an indication and Mr. Pitstick's going to lead us in the pledge.
Please stand.
Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens of Washington courthouse and the city of Washington courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything and in your name, Lord, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Pitstick, you didn't start with O Canada or whatever.
Oh, I missed that. You missed that part.
Not it right.
That's a good thing. Uh, roll call, Kelly.
Hall. Christman.
Here.
Hawke. Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Hawke.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Okay, we have approval of the regular council meeting on June twelfth. You can mark out the words special there. Anything you see that change?
Well, no, it's good. I will make a motion that we accept it as written.
I'll second.
You do? Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
This is one of those times when there's an echo. They say roll call and you say call.
I think of that not only.
Mr. Denon, is there any communication?
None.
Okay, we have report of council committee and he's not here. Service Safety and Recreation. I don't know who else is on that committee. I forgot. We had to need somebody else to read that. Who's vice chair of that committee, Kel? I forgot.
Vice chair is Steve Schultz.
Hey, it's me. I was going to say, I was going to look into it. I thought I was on the committee. All right. The Safety Service and Recreation Committee met and the council chamber is located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, June the twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six P M. Mr. Ted Hawke was IED and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Tim, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Jeff Benari, uh, police chief, Mr. Parks, Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, the com- he gave me a lawman. You know, there's why Ted took off tonight. What's going on?
We'll have to up your pace.
Yeah, give me another dime. The committee benefited from a report by the fire department. Uh, Chief Downing reported that multiple inspections were being completed. Number two, Chief Downing noted that planning had begun for Safety Town. Number three, the committee benefited from a report by the police department. Chief Benari noted that research was being completed for a more cost-effective alternative to the seminal pro- to a seminal program such as the lifesaver program. Number four, the committee noted that traffic review had been completed at Five Points Intersection, Leesburg Avenue, Highland Avenue, Columbus Avenue, Clinton Avenue, and Kroger's parking lot entrance. Number five, administration advised the committee that the dispatch project of the police department would begin soon. Number six, the committee discussed firework concerns. All members of the committee and the administration contributed to the discussion. The committee recommended that discussion continue. Number seven, committee benefited from a report of crime statistics within the city of Washington courthouse. Number eight, the committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. The committee noted that different options would be reviewed regarding placement of leak contracts. Number nine, administration noted that the storm sewer work continued to be completed on Market Street in preparation for an upcoming Market Street renovation project. Mr. Gary Dean advised OPWC bids would be open on June twentieth and then a special meeting would need to be held to expedite the project. Number ten, the committee noted the water department-led service elimination survey was completed. Number eleven, administration advised the committee that the placement of experimental blacktop sealant on Riverdale Drive had been completed. Number twelve, the committee noted that the administration would be applying for small city grant through the Ohio Department of Transportation. Number thirteen, the committee noted that the trail work continued. Mr. Gary Dean especially noted work being completed near the railroad crossing of Lakeview Avenue and Milligan Avenue. Number fourteen, administration advised the committee that paving work would begin in July. Number fifteen, the committee recommended legislation be brought to council for the administration to apply for nature works grant. Number sixteen, the committee noted that general maintenance work was being completed at Ayman, Washington and Christman Parks. Number seventeen, the committee noted that the administration hired seasonal employees for the Washington Park Splash Path. Respectfully submitted. Well, Mr. Ted Hawke, chairperson, Safety Service Recreation Committee, Mr. Kelly, this is Kelly Ford, recording this afternoon.
Thanks, Steve. Seriously, that was a lot.
There was a lot. That's why Ted wasn't here. Now I know what's going on.
Any questions, comments? Someone want to make a motion to accept that report?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as read.
Second.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Okay, next is our reports from our city officials. Mr. City Manager.
The storm sewer televising and cleaning work on Market Street is largely complete. They are working on the sanitary sewer now, which is basically the same process. Uh, but they have progressed with that quite a bit. While they're in town, we're going to have them clean out a large storm line out by thirty-eight, up by the, the Little League ball fields that we really don't have the ability to do because of the, the diameter of the pipe. It's got a little bit of gravel in it that we need to get out of there. Uh, Splash Pad, the three young people that we have has solved a lot of problems down there. Uh, we are not going to be able to keep somebody down there every hour that's open, uh, but it's worked out very well. We have them go through, we'll take periodic little stroll in Diamond Park and through the little area over there and we're just thrilled and they seem very happy. And, oh, Friday will be the first time they get paid, so I'm sure they'll be very happy about that.
Have they had anybody give them any problems, Mr.?
A, a little bit, but nothing major. And quite honestly, the, the service department and police department take very good care of them. Uh, storybook residents, a number of them will have that back up to the creek. Uh, and we have nearly all of them signed and backed. There's still a few stragglers out there. Uh, they will have received letters. Uh, and what we are asking for is permission to, uh, get to the creek across their property. There's a tremendous amount of brush and junk in the creek that we need to clear out or we're going to have a real problem. Uh, a lot of it is ash trees that have died. They've fallen down and there's some that we just need to go ahead and knock over with like a tobacco back there and then go ahead and haul that stuff out of there. Uh, but you have a tremendous amount of, of brush and debris that we need to get rid of before you get a real tobacco problem there. We've had a couple complaints about taste issues with water or trouble. That probably is because we have well number eight, which is an old one down by the water plant bringing water directly into the plant. And the taste complaints, they complain about a mineral taste to it and the only thing that we can think of is well number eight. I can't detect anything different than usual. Uh, and certainly when you do something, it'll make ice tea with it. It's the plain, the same stuff. But we've gone ahead and we did do fairly extensive testing to make sure that there wasn't any type of unusual issue that we weren't comprehending. Everything's fine. Raw water reserves are good. Uh, demand at the plant remains high, uh, close to two million gallons a day, which is unusually high. We had the leak detection people in not that long ago. Uh, it's been interesting that it hasn't dropped since last week because you would think that it would have been higher last week and then we would slowly diminish a little bit and we dropped at least one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand gallons. We haven't really done that yet. So that's something that we're going to have to continue to monitor and figure out. Is that actual demand or do we have to? We've been drilling that new well out at the Y M C A. And you'll see them out there again because they ran out of pipe. Uh, it's not that far away from those other wells, but we're down about three hundred feet now and we're still drilling. So we're going to have to go a little bit deeper. Uh, the well driller and EPA and geologists all swear that it's there. Uh, so we might have to go another twenty feet and hit water. We might have to go a wee bit further, but we're already, ooh, three hundred feet plus down the ground. Uh, would like to thank everybody that participated in the Small Nation Planning Information Event for downtown. It was a very nice exercise that I think everybody found to be of value. Would like to thank Service. Uh, they worked with Carnegie Library and Kids in the Summer Program there. They took them to a tour down Source Department. They took them through the water plant. Uh, they got to show them all some pieces of heavy equipment. Unfortunately, Lance Heath showed them the air horn on the dump truck. Uh, which I don't know if Gary Dean's hearing will ever be the same again. And would like to thank everybody that was involved with Toast to Summer. That's a tremendous amount of work, but it's a very nice event for the community. Uh, but that, an event like that on that scale is a huge amount of work and would thank everybody involved with that. That's all I got for this evening.
Anybody have any questions for the city manager?
How's our billing comparing on water with that two million gallon? That two million gallon a day's been going on a good while, hasn't it?
Well, it went up to two million, then we dropped down for a little bit and now we're back up at two. We've had the leak detection people in, but something, we may have a little leak somewhere that we got to figure out, or you could have more than one. Uh, we did discover one when we did the storm water work on Market. There'd always been a storm catch basin that you could hear water in that they've looked for years where it came from. And there was an old tap down by the, the carpet store there, uh, that wasn't closed off properly, that was just dumping water into storm line. Probably done that for, oh, fifteen plus years. Uh, well, longer than that because Gary could remember it when he was fifteen, so more than twenty. But that, they fixed that properly, so that's a little bit of a problem, but that's still just one tap.
I always get a kick out of when it says you're televising the sewer. You show that on Channel Three.
You could. Sometimes it's interesting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Director of Finance, you've already reported to us earlier, but do you want to add anything?
Yeah, we'll just give a quick overview again, real quick. Uh, we got our audit turned in. Talked with Brian, who does it for us. Didn't see any issues, so we're good to go. Uh, overall this time of year, we're in good shape. Uh, steady growth last year. Um, you know, it would be a little bit better if we just stayed up with inflation, but overall, uh, we're, we're in good shape, so pretty much it.
Does anybody have any questions around? We've already heard a lot. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Grass Man and all that.
We haven't given any citations for mowing grass in the street, uh, yet, but we've given some. We've also seen a reduction in the number of yards, which is one of the fact that the Bank has sold some of the lots and they're now being mowed by the new owners, which is helpful. The other problem that we're having though with mowing, uh, since we're talking about that, is some of the new, new houses that have been sold, they don't mow them. They just leave them, uh, unmoed until the, until the closing date and until they move in. And so we're having to go in and mow these houses that people bought. People move out, they don't mow. Might be a month or two before the closing is on the house and we're having to settle. That's something we have to deal with. Probably ten or week.
So it would be the people who are selling the house that it hasn't sold yet, their responsibility?
What they've done is they've, they've moved out of the house. They've sold the house. They've got, they got a contract on the house, so they're going somewhere else. The house sits there and waits till the closing, which might be, it might be a month before the new, new one is moved in. And so for a month, month and a half, there's no mowing takes place, so we have to go in and mow it.
Who are you billing for that?
The, the new owners.
Putting on their taxes.
They, they can't, they actually can't go and claim the property and still.
Start mowing, yeah, right.
It's a problem.
It is a problem.
It almost looks like it would be the people who own it still until they actually get rid of it.
Ultimately, I thi- I think technically from a procedure standpoint, it would go on the people who bought it, but then because they were damaged by sellers, they would then have to go up in some sort of.
At the bottom line, it goes in the income, the, the tax, property tax.
Yeah.
Whoever's paying that, they can get a two hundred and fifty dollar bill.
Yeah.
Wow, or more. If you mow it two or three times.
We did have one family that just recently moved in. It took, they took them two months to move. And so that, that two months, they closed, but they didn't realize that they were supposed to mow their yard. They were from some other city. So we gave them a little break, but we still had to mow it.
Anything else, Mr. Pitstick? We have one resident that wishes to speak, Mr. Kestercay. You know the process.
Jerry Kestercay, thirteen eleven, Findlayton Lane. I have some issues with the online information about meetings and looking at trying to pull up minutes from other meetings or trying to even watch the, this procedure because I went on, we were on vacation, so I checked and see what's going on. I, I logged in and it was so, the static was so loud, I couldn't even hear what you guys were saying. You know, it's a very, very poor stuff there, so I'm not sure how that, you know, should be changed or anything. And kind of concerned about, I go on, I go into the webpage, I look at the calendar, I see the meetings that are, are on. I appreciate the phone call when you canceled the, the one meeting, but I went back on and looked and I didn't know how to find when the, the, the new meeting for that was lo- located anywhere on the webpage and, uh, and also, uh, like I say, we're coming up for a, uh, zoning meeting and there's no listing of that meeting on the calendar to know, you know, that that's even scheduled. I don't think I've ever seen any zoning meetings on the calendar uh, you know, to show what, you know, what's going on with those, so I just kind of concerned about some of those things that just kind of be missing. I don't know if it's something that we need to do with our webpage people to make sure that that all gets put in and gets added into the information that we, you know, that the residents would like to see. And, uh, just wanted to let you guys know that, you know, sometimes you can't get it and it all, so, and thank you.
Well, we'll look into the quality of the video program. We've had a little bit of problem with that fairly recently. The issue with the zoning meeting, um, I'll sit down with Rod and Kelly and make sure that Rod's giving her his stuff. He would do the advertisement in the, the newspaper, but I don't know if he's giving Kelly his stuff to post.
Kelly, so, so you put it up?
No.
He'll give it to Alan to put up.
Oh, okay, so.
I give Alan my meetings to put up. Rod does give Alan his meetings to put up. Rod, I used to put all of Rod's meetings online that you guys actually have in front of you. And it was requested by him, but I don't, that he takes care of his because he knows the schedule and I do mine once a month at the beginning of the month and his changes often, so.
There was one other thing. I wanted to talk about this, the notification of special meetings that you've talked about that, that Rod's supposed to put up in there. The, how many people actually get the Record Herald newspaper? Uh, you know, it used to be you could go in there and look at the paper and see the things, but now they're trying to charge you to even be able to look at it online. And so is there anywhere else that these, is that these notifications? Some things in it, but doesn't have those kind of meetings.
I mean, we could talk to them about putting that information in the shopper's guide. And how we could talk with, well, the library would help us out there, I'd say. Uh, no, we'll think about different ways you can do that.
Yeah, because, you know, if you don't get the newspaper, you can't find that.
True.
That stuff out, so, okay, thank you.
It's a good point. Thank you.
Meeting could be there and gone and over with the time you get the newspaper.
Very true. Thanks. Okay, legislation previously introduced. We have ordinance number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four. That would be third reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four in third reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-four, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Washington courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio.
Move for passage.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, second reading.
I'll move that you say resolution number R twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, I'm second.
Roll call. Any discussion?
Uh, I do have one question.
Okay.
Mrs. Miller, uh, has been invited to two of our Vitality Task Force meetings, uh, and she has not responded in any way. And we're appointing her to the Historic District Review Board. And the Vitality Task Force is trying to redo the historic part of the downtown, so I'm wondering if she either has too much going on because this is a direct tie-in with what we're trying to accomplish and we can't even get her to come to a meeting, so I'm just a little concerned about her not showing up. So I, uh, I'm not, I'm just a little, I'm, I'm hesitant about voting in the affirmative for her.
I don't know. Maybe we could do some checking on why she hasn't been able to come or something to the Vitality.
Is she working someplace?
She's a realtor, I believe.
Yeah, full time.
Yeah.
She does quite a bit. She volunteers at the farmer's market. I live here up there.
I don't know. Okay, anything else? Roll call.
Mr. Lynch.
Okay.
One thing that, so at this point it's a bit awkward. Suggestion that you consider going ahead and making the appointment and we'll confirm with Mandy that this is a task that she wants to undertake and that she has time to undertake. And if she tells us in the negative, she can just give us the letter and we'll start all over again.
But she's already accepted the offer for the position?
Uh, talked to her about it some time ago and at that time the answer was yes.
And she obviously is on the committee with the Vitality.
No, she's not on the Vitality.
She's Main Street.
She's the head of Main Street.
But Jen's tried to contact her and she hasn't contacted Jen back.
All right, uh, roll call.
Harry Head Call. Christman.
Yes.
Johnson, did you say yes? Yeah, I did. I thought you did. Okay, I want to make sure. Christman, yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
No.
Lynch.
Yes.
Sorry. Resolution number R twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Mandy Miller to the Historic District Review Board of the City of Washington courthouse for its terms including December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Roll call.
Call, yes. Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
No.
Lynch.
Yes.
Okay, new legislation in writing, resolution number R twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
I'll move we put resolution R twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Call.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to apply for funding through the Nature Works Fund in April, June and expecting great obligations of funding.
Okay, I can't remember this time of year ever having more ordinances than resolutions than we do, so it's interesting. Okay, Mr. Christman, do you have anything this evening?
I would just like to thank everybody, our big audience back there for coming, coming to see us again. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mrs. Call.
Um, just going to take a second and brag about my, my young budding chicken enthusiast son who got a perfect score on his chicken project at four H this evening, which is why I was a little late coming in, uh, missed the, the committee meetings, but super proud of him and his chickens.
Who else would have somebody that does well with chickens? Mr. Schultz, what do you got?
Well, just what we discussed in the committee meeting about the downtown and the possibility for the future of the city and the, the growth of the city sounds very exciting. Hopefully there'll be some movement with this, uh, Small Nation, that's the name of the foundation, so I'll get some input from them and some, uh, positive vibes from them and see what happens in the future.
It's sad that, I'm, I'm sorry that Ted in here, because I wanted to tell Ted, I did get gas for a dollar thirty-nine the other day. Of course, it was at White Castle, but I wanted to let Ted know that. That's all I got.
You're out of order. Sorry, Jim.
Well, I, I was watching America's Got Talent last night, and I thought of Mrs. Call. This gentleman had a chicken. He could tell, he, he could predict, and he went down and he was, actually picked up the card for everybody, and I thought, Silly would really appreciate that, if you can go back and look at it, Silly.
I'll have to look, we've got some work to do, where ours are not at that level yet.
That's all I have. Yes. He laid it in Simon's hand. That's all I have, Mister Charlie.
I just didn't think we'd be talking about fortune telling, uh, so soon after our last time we talked about it.
That was a little pious.
I thought we'd wait until October.
Don't start that again.
I, I just wanna say thank you for bringing up, um, the technology issues. I agree that, yeah, the technology is still, I know that, um, as far as all that, though, he's had his hands very, 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 uh, especially with the municipal court, it's not necessarily his fault, it was neglected for a long time. And they're doing a lot of work trying to get that caught up. It's affected, I mean, me, many other attorneys, um, and now they're looking at some of that backup. We need to, um, make sure that we're, have to get all that traded out, sort of continue and make sure we're updating our other systems. Um, I know we've had some problems with emails not working with Gmail and things like that. And I think all of that is slated to, uh, get fixed, uh, in the near future. So, um, yeah, thank you for bringing it up, it is something, but, yeah, I know it's, it really is not his fault because of all of the things going on with the technology, especially just how long it was neglected in the municipal court, so.
Hello, that was a joke.
It was a truth, it wasn't a joke.
But anyway, I would just say I appreciated being excused from the last meeting, I try very hard not to miss a meeting, but I got to do something that's been on my bucket list for many years, and that is go out into the Badlands and Black Hills and see Mount Rushmore and the Crazy Horse, uh, area, and some incredible, incredible things that seeing pictures of don't do it justice. And so I've been, uh, in California and places like that, but I've never been in between. So we drove out there and had a great time, and I really appreciate it. But as Dorky said, there's no place like home. It was good to get back to Washington Courthouse. And, uh, again, I appreciate you bringing up the issues that you did. Uh, I agree with Caleb, I, I T has become such a huge part of everything. I guess if we, if somebody ever needed help, it's probably Alan, but, um, it is really a major, major thing to take care of in a city, um, you know, with all the issues that come up, so, anyway, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, with that, do we want to adjourn, or do we want to stay here?
No, I'll move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned at eight oh three, it looks like.